I'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2018-07 for April 3, 2018. Those who'd like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
(inaudible) 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 Entertained a motion from council to approve legislative minutes from March 20, 2018. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 6 in reference to Public Safety Building?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 6 in reference to the Rural Legacy Easement.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 6 in reference to the discussion of House Bill 1595 and House Bill 1476.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from March 6 in reference to Compensation Allowance Commission Recommendations.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the closed work session minutes from February 6 in reference to Electronic Communications Policy.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Good evening, Mrs. Hurley, how are you?
Good evening, Council President, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this evening is Resolution Number 27, 2018, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to Warwick Community College in the amount of $100,000 for the Adult Basic Education Program. The funding for the Adult Basic Education Program was requested in the fiscal year 18 budget. It was mistakenly not put in the adopted budget, and the college is now requesting funding for the shortfall for that program.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 27, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 28, 2018, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Wycomico County Circuit Court in the amount of $77,437 for electrical and HVAC upgrades. The Circuit Court is converting storage space back into office space because they have increased staffing needs, and they are requesting funding to upgrade the electrical and HBA systems in those offices. And we have Melissa Beatty here from Circuit Court.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 28, 2018. So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Beatty?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. How's everybody? How are you? If you could just state your name for the public, your title, thank you.
Melissa Beatty, Court Administrator, Circuit Court for Wycomico County.
Kate Matthews, General Services Supervisor, Wycomico County.
Jimmy Sarbanes, Administrative Judge, Circuit Court for Wycomico County.
All right, thank you.
The upgrades that are being requested at this point are, as the council administrator indicated, allowing, in order to allow the Circuit Court to convert former office space back into usable space to accommodate our staffing needs in our current footprint.
Okay. Questions?
Yes, the storage that's there now, where is it going?
The storage space that we're talking about had been office space. Once the Circuit Court went to the Maryland Electronic Court system in December of 2016, we're able to, bit by bit, eliminate much of our paper storage need, and that will allow us to maintain the space for offices.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Let me get back to where I was here. All those in favor of Resolution 28, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you all for being here. Thank you.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 29, 2018, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore in the amount of $52,345 for the Phase III construction project. The Maryland Transit Administration awarded a grant to the Tri-County Council over five years ago, and the construction costs have now increased, so they are now seeking funding for the shortfall.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 29, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further, any discussion?
I have a little bit of trouble with this and the fact that during the budget session, we specifically cut this out of the budget, and the Executive's Office was fine with it, and now in the 10th month of the fiscal year, coming back for the exact same amount. I mean, I don't necessarily disagree that, you know, that what they're using it for is needed, probably is. At some point, I would rather see this in the regular budget process. We, you know, the budget process will start, you know, we're gonna be getting the Executive's Budget in, I think, next, next, our next session. So I think I will vote against this because I don't like this sort of thing coming back to us so late. I do understand, you know, the need for supplemental appropriations, you know, the Warwick thing was left out of the budget, Circuit Court needs come up. This is a little bit different in the fact that we specifically removed it from the budget. Now we're asking, you know, it's being asked to be put back in the same exact amount at a very late date, so I'm just uncomfortable with that sort of procedure going on, so.
Comments? I believe we removed it because the executive branch said that it should be removed because it wasn't necessary to be in there. I think it was an oversight on their part where they told the council specifically that this wasn't a necessary appropriation. In retrospect, that was not the case, and I do know that the Tri-County Council, the reason that we're at such a late date is because the Tri-County Council has been trying to get it on our agenda for probably four to five months.
Well, I mean, we'd share some culpability too in the fact that we removed it. I mean, we can't put all the blame on the executive branch.
Well, we, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, but we removed it, and it, I don't, I just, I have a, I have trouble with that sort of thing where we cut something and then, all right, let's put it back in the budget after the budget process is over. So I'm, you know, I'm not, again, it's not a hill I'm gonna die on, but I'm uncomfortable with it, so I'm probably not gonna vote for it, so that's it.
I feel the same way, but we can't hold up construction.
Fair enough.
Any other comments?
Fair enough.
Just had a question for Wayne. One of the letters said that we have 585,000 left in contingency, so after this, we'll be down to 372, roughly. Is that with two months left, give you any heartburn being down to that level?
No, we're gonna have, Matt, after, if these transfers are all approved this evening, we'll have 355,320 remaining for April, May, June. I don't see anything on the horizon right now, so no, I don't have heartburn about it.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Strasburg. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 29, 2018, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Resolution 29, 2018 passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. One legislative bill this evening, it's being introduced, first reading, by the, introduced by the Council President. It is Legislative Bill 2018-04, an act to add Chapter 30 titled Clean Energy Loan Program to the Wycomico County Code to establish a clean energy loan program for commercial property owners, establishing the scope and eligibility for the Clean Energy Loan Program, providing for qualifying criteria, establishing a calculation of the clean energy loan surcharge, providing for a recorded agreement and certain notice, providing for the collection of loan payments, establishing default procedures, providing for financing of a loan under the program, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the Clean Energy Loan Program. And if I may, Mr. President, just, that's a, that's quite a mouthful, it doesn't really maybe get to some of the essential parts of it. First thing maybe to be noted for everybody in attendance and might be listening is that this, this does not propose the county making loans. These loans would be made by private lenders. What's happening here is this particular legislation is authorized by Maryland Enabling Legislation to set up this particular program.
All right.
Many counties have it.
Let me get a motion to introduce, entertain a motion to introduce Legislative Bill 2018-04.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I just would add that many, many counties have this, and as far as the administrative burden on the county, that can be contracted out to private organizations, and there is one in particular that most counties use that's very familiar with this program.
And when you say contracted out, not at the county's expense?
Well, there would be a charge, but it can be put on to the loan recipients, as I mentioned, the surcharge.
Right.
That would be part of, in addition to their amortization payments on the loan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions from council, comments? I think it's, we had a work session, or a brief work session on this with Bill Chambers, and Finance Director also was there at the time, and I believe stated that this would not be any burden to the county as far as manpower or funding is concerned.
There would be a possible minor manpower burden because what happens here, the payments that are needed to amortize the loans are put on to the recipient of the loan's property tax bill. So the county has to take that tax money and pass it on over to the lenders to amortize the loan, so there would be something that probably couldn't be contracted out, but I would think it would be very, very minor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions from anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor of the introduction of Legislative Bill 2018-04, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, the introduction succeeds.
The public hearing can be held May 1 at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else, Mr. Taylor?
That's it.
Thank you very much. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern.
Good evening. Thank you all for giving me the time. I'm Bob Caldwell, the county executive. At this time, I would like to encourage the members of the council to forego any changes in the charter amendments this year because I personally believe that they should be brought forth by Charter Review Committee rather than seven members on the council. The Charter Review Committee consisted of 15 individuals who met and discussed for months potential changes. Many of you were on that committee at the time, and they were brought forth to the council to vote on then which ones we went with. It took over a year for public discussion to come to terms with the CAFO. It's taken over two years to establish a rough draft for the dog ordinance. It's taken two years for the personnel manual, and I just don't feel that the five remaining council meetings that you've got now will be enough time to discuss those 10 different amendments. The fact that it has got to be to the printers by August the 1st to be on the ballot, that's per the election office, limits the amount of time. It's got to be to the county attorney, Mr. Wilber, to write those amendments, and then brought back to you all to approve by July 1 in order to make that work. So that only gives us April, May, and June to actually discuss these charter amendments. This year is gonna be a big year on the ballot anyhow, there's over 23 positions. I just would like to see us not confused the ballot this year with 10 charter amendments at this time. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Oh, good. Always helps. Pass it around.
(inaudible)
Is there any more of these? Do you want any more of these?
Oh, there's extra.
Okay.
(inaudible)
Thank you so much for passing those along. Good evening, councilmen. I'm Joan Smith, President of the Wycomico County Education Association, also known as WCEA. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I appreciate the difficulty of your position as you consider the topics and issues that affect our community, and I believe that you would all agree that the future of our community, progressive or recessive, rests with you as you consider the budget of the Wycomico County school system. I know that you carefully examine and consider the budget items, most especially when concerns are brought forward by those who work within the system, carry out business within the county, live, pay taxes, and vote in Wycomico County. So my comments this evening are in response and support of what needs to be made a priority for the children, their future within the Wycomico County Public School System, and the success of Wycomico County. There have been comments made about Superintendent Dr. Donna Hanlon's budget, which involves three initiatives. In speaking of budgeted items, initiatives, programs, and capital improvements, these are different from the budget items referring to salaries to recruit and retain a highly effective workforce. They're different categories in the budget. The salaries are a separate investment in our school system. Capital improvements means the addition of permanent structures, the change or the restoration of property to enhance value or increase or adapt it to new areas and uses. I read a comment recently that the infrastructure of the county schools had been left to deteriorate to the point that some schools needed to be replaced. Certainly, the county realized that buildings would not last forever and that the county would need to be prepared for their replacement. Let's consider for a moment the cost of replacing parts no longer readily available for those buildings. Consider new materials and the new techniques of construction that actually save money. Consider the requirements of today's society for technology to accelerate students academically so that they are prepared for the challenges they will face when they eventually enter the workforce, hopefully here in Wycomico County. Consider first and foremost the health and safety of our children. You know the conditions in the old Bennett Middle School, West Salisbury, Enid Beaver Run. Replacing those buildings made good sense. It was good business, so the cost to replace aged buildings should be no surprise. They should have been budgeted for through the years. In a recent missive to the Daily Times, I read the $30,708 spending per pupil. However, in the January 23, 2018 Overview of Education Funding in Maryland, a report presented to the State House Ways and Means Committee, Education Subcommittee, per pupil revenues for public schools in Wycomico County fiscal year 2018 is listed as $2,925. Dr. Hanlon's budget for general fund unrestricted budget requests are $7,337,365. A major component of the superintendent's forward movement for Wycomico County Public Schools is to recruit and retain a high-performing workforce. This move is essential to the success of the other two priorities. As noted by the superintendent, during the last three years has been, there has been a high turnover rate upwards of 20 percent. This is a significant loss, not only to the functionality of our schools, but for the community. A local business leader recently commented that if there are even a few, more than two employees leaving the business, there's a problem. In recent surveys, educators list poor salaries as one of the top three reasons for leaving the profession. Many of our finest educators leave the profession because it offers lower compensation and less respect than comparable careers. Teachers and educators don't get into this profession to get rich, nor did we expect that we may need to hold second or even third jobs. We became educators to make a difference, and it's time that you recognize the increasing salary is a student issue, not just a teacher issue. Maintaining a highly professional workforce is the most effective strategy for ensuring that every student in Wycomico County has access to highly qualified educators. Schools improve and the entire community benefits when additional education funding for educators' salaries is a top priority of local leaders. Teacher salaries have been relatively flat, and teachers have fallen behind comparable professions. We ask that you erase that penalty, the money that teachers have given up to stay in the profession. It is imperative that the negotiated agreement between the Wycomico County Board of Education and the Wycomico County Education Association, which is one step plus 1 percent COLA for Unit 1, which includes teachers, and one step plus 1.5 percent COLA for support staff be fully funded by this county executive and county council. Wycomico County is charged with one of the most important constitutional obligations, that of providing a thorough and efficient system of free public schools. The educators in their classrooms every day in each of our schools know what works and what their students need. Our educators dramatically improve our public schools to better educate students, which raises the quality of life in Wycomico County. Let's be clear. Maintenance of effort refers to funding, not less than that of the prior fiscal year. Maintenance of effort is the base, not a cap, on the amount of funding for our students, for our schools. Wycomico County must raise salaries for certificated professionals and support staff this year, and that requires full funding of the 2019 Wycomico County Public Schools budget. Gentlemen, I thank you for your work, and I thank you for your leadership, and I have a couple of things to add in addition to my lovely graphs, which by the way, came from the Wycomico County budget, okay? And this is a stack of signed petitions from educators. Wycomico County Executive and County Council, please fully fund educators' salaries. Fully fund the proposed Wycomico County Board of Education budget to provide, per the negotiated agreement between Wycomico County Board of Education, Wycomico County Education Association, Unit 1 a raise in salary and including benefits of one step and 1 percent COLA, and for Units 3, 4, a raise in salary and including benefits of one step and 1.5 percent COLA. Petition background, educators in the classroom and those support staff who keep the system running matter most to the welfare and success of our students and indeed to our community. And I would like to add this to the minutes this evening.
Sorry. Can I ask you a question? Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Do you have it?
If you give it to Mrs. Hurley.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hurley, and then she can make copies.
(inaudible) thank you.
Okay.
And if I may, take one more second of your time. I'd like to introduce Ms. Sherri West, who is an educator at Pemberton Elementary School. And there was some question about, you know, how much schools have changed through the years, and I asked her to bring in with her, what happens in school in a day's time? What happens in a week's time? What does it take you to prepare for the young ones in front of you every single day? So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Sherri.
Um, in this tub and in my bag.
Sherri, if you, if you could go to the mic because they can't hear it if you're not on a mic. You can leave that out front if you want, that'd be great.
I just made it.
Or if you wanna bring the mic forward, you could, don't have to stand behind the podium.
Okay. Surprise, this loud as my voice is. Okay. In the tub, I actually teach first grade, so in the tub, there are several different things from, I teach five different reading groups a day, so there are supplies in there for each different reading group that I teach. There's chart paper, there's actual different supplies that I need. The county supplies me with different manuals that I have to teach from, as well as pencils that we need to supply the kids, as well as the math manuals, the social studies curriculum that I needed to create because it's not supplied for me by the county, as well as the science curriculum and additional things that we need to do. In addition to that, I'm only allotted on some days up to 30 minutes of planning time. So yes, I do get a salary, but in that salary, I have to use a lot of my own time to create materials, copy those materials, produce what they need for my classroom. I have to use part of that salary to provide my students for things that they need because within that budget that we are allotted, kids don't come to school with the supplies they need, and if they don't have that, I need to provide that for them because unfortunately their parents are not supplying that for them either. So my salary also supplies that for them as well. So this is just a small portion of my classroom. These are the things that I need every day to do my planning with. I can't take this back and forth. As you can see, it was a struggle just to bring that here tonight. I can't take that back and forth. I have to have these materials, so I can't take that home, so then again, I have to have that extra time in my classroom to have that, which then takes away from my family time. I do have two children at home, I have a husband, so I've lost many hours away from them, just trying to make sure that I have what I need to do for my kids at school as well. So this was just a small portion of what we do, and just wanted to show you that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments, council comments.
For the teachers, don't take this the wrong way. I mean, I'm all for you getting a pay raise, but as like when the county exec presented his budget, we can't specifically give you a pay raise. It's gotta be in their budget, and this paper you give us, it's in here two different ways. You got it listed up here as instructional salaries and wages in one category, and then you got it down here in salary and wages. We approved the budget in a block grant, so we don't know where the money's going or who it's going to. So that's why it's kinda hard for us to sit here and say, you know, we're gonna give you the raise, but it's in a block grant. We don't know what, once the board gets their grant there on budget, they pretty much do with it what they want, there's nothing we can do. So it's kinda hard for us to sit here and say we can give you a pay raise.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Any other council comments?
May I?
Joe?
Good. I've been asked to announce about Mount Herman Plow Days. It's this Saturday, big family event. Mount Herman Plow Days, it's this Saturday, April 7. It's a fun family event, starts around 10:00 a.m. in the morning. If no one's ever been, it's worth going and seeing. It's a different kind of an event. It's put on by a gentleman named Orrin Purdue and his family. Orin Purdue and his family and friends. So if you want a fun day of something to do Saturday, visit it. It's down near the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Under Presidential comments, my sister was a teacher. When she retired, she had enough personal items. You have a box there. She filled two offices with personal products that she had purchased on her own so that she could teach her class. So I know what you're, what you're saying, and I do understand what teachers do have to go through, because I helped her load the office with everything. And it's, it is, it's stuff that she paid, and there were curriculums that she had to put together as well herself. So I personally understand that. Thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention tonight. Outside of that, we had a Fruitland Parade last week, and we also had a Hevern Parade, and so it's a good time. A lot of people came out, and thankfully, we had great weather. So everything opened up for, for the weekend. Now it's closing back down for a couple more days. Outside of that, entertain a motion, if I could, to adjourn, as stated such. To adjourn from legislative session to go into an open work session, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to local government articles, section three dash three oh five, B one and eight as follows: to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position, and discuss the personnel matter to protect the confidentiality of the individual. Not yet. That's a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting's adjourned. At this time, we go into open work session. The first item is Mr. Nick Rice, the local preference. Good evening. How are you?
Good. How about yourself?
Twenty-five, thank you.
Nick Rice, purchasing agent for Wycomico County.
I know that, I believe we've had a work session before in touching on this to a certain degree. Did you have a chance, was it shared with you, the, the information as far as what other counties are doing, sort of local preferences concerned?
Yes, I did see that.
I guess the question I would have is what your take on it was, in reference to some of the counties, as far as how they, they were dealing with it.
Well, I think one of the, the biggest ones I've seen was, and I forget if it, if it was Queen Anne's County or which county it was, that stated they put one in, implemented it in two thousand twelve, and then in two thousand sixteen, they removed it.
Saint Mary's.
For, for various reasons, I believe, that we brought up in the previous work session. I think it's, just looking at it, it's, it sounds like a great idea. I just think when you dig deeper into, and I believe Robert Taylor discussed, you know, the legal sides of it, which puts the county a little bit of a risk of protest. It, it starts to muddy the waters a little bit on how we, how we do the bidding process. I just think the avan, or the disadvantages far outweigh the advantages of it. With that said, there are ways that we can definitely help the local business community, one of which is just educating your local business on how to do business with Wycomico County. One of the, another idea is that we've been kicking around locally with the city of Salisbury, as well as the Board of Ed, and Town of Ocean City, Warwick, S.U. There's a group of us, local professionals that get together, and there's an idea of doing kind of a reverse trade show, where we, we all, purchasing professionals, all get together, allow the local business community to come in, talk with us, ask questions, find out, you know, what, what are, because we all have different policies and procedures. For the most part, they're similar, but the, the bidding thresholds are going to be different. The way we handle informal, the way we handle formal bids might be different between the state, the cities, the counties. Another way that we've discussed before is, we've since, since I've been here with the county, we've raised our formal bid threshold from five thousand to twenty-five thousand. What that allows us to do is everything that's under twenty-five thousand, we can do informal bids. If there's a wide enough vendor base within Wycomico County, we can solicit only Wycomico County quotes. One of the, I believe when this originally came up, it was regarding a vendor that had a complaint that it was a small threshold. They were local Wycomico County business. We ended up awarding to a Delaware company. That contract was six thousand dollars. At that point in time, we had to do a formal bid. The formal bid clearly stated, the lowest bidder will be awarded, no matter if they're Wycomico or Delaware. Since we've now raised that threshold to twenty-five thousand, those goods that we were purchasing can now be purchased from only Wycomico County businesses if we choose. So there, there are definitely ways that we can go around and, and, and help out the local community without strictly putting in a local preference policy. I think it's proven, if you've talked to some people that have done it or attempted to do it, that there's, there's a major headache in attempting to, you know, one that we said is how do you define local? Is it within the county? Is the business within the county? Is the business owner within the county? There's a lot of gray area there that us government purchasing professionals prefer it to be as black and white as possible.
Saint Mary's seemed to have trouble with it, but Queen Anne's didn't seem to have trouble with it.
There are some that, that have it implemented. I haven't actually spoke with those local county procurement professionals to see what, what their exact take on it is. I just know from, like I said, from, and within that briefing book, there's a position paper by the National Institute for Government Purchasing that, you know, their stance is, is pretty clear. It's, they're against putting in any type of preference, whether it's local or whatever it may be. Then there's federally, if it's got a federal grant to it, the federal laws do not allow us to do a local preference. The state of Maryland actually has a reciprocal preference, which means if there's any other, if your bid is coming from a state that has a local preference, the state of Maryland actually puts a negative preference on you. So you have to be five percent lower than anyone just to be considered. So there's that to consider, too. If, if Wycomico County decides to enact a local preference policy, we would then trigger any national reciprocal preference that other states may have, that could eventually, like I said, it could hurt the local business community more than it could probably help the local business community.
Would you say, I, I think a lot of this came about probably based on what was in Wycomico County, was probably state contracts. They sort of felt that the county should intercede, you know, and maybe not recognize that we have some limitations. In what, what we bid out, do you really see where there's that much of a difference, where local companies aren't getting, aren't having, having the advantages?
No. And I mean, especially if you consider in construction projects, locally, you would have an advantage just because you don't have to have the expenses of actually mobilizing outside of, you know, if it's a company that's over the bridge, they have to do mobilization. They have hotel expenses. They have a lot more expenses that the local business community would not have. So in my experience, no, I don't, I don't see that. One of the things that I would fear if we put a local preference is, would we start to lose bidders that are not local? And if we did that, we'd really dwindle down our vendor pool on certain projects and, 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 you know, then, especially looking at construction, if construction companies are, are too booked up, and we lose, we dwindle our vendor pool down to only a few vendors, we could potentially not find contractors to bid on our projects at all.
Any questions?
I think, you know, Nick makes good points, and he's made them in the past. I mean, I know we've talked about this a few times. I, I mean, is there a consensus that we, I mean, it kind of keeps coming up. I mean, I don't know if there's any support for doing this or not, but I mean, I would say that if there's not support for it, then we can, you know, may not need to come up again.
Quit beating it.
Yeah, basically. So, I mean, I think Nick makes a good point, and I don't, you know, while it may sound good on the surface, I think for the taxpayers, the best deal is low bid on above the twenty-five like we, like we have.
Yeah. And, and honestly, since it was brought to my attention some time ago, on more than one occasion, but I haven't really seen a huge push by the industry saying that they're looking for something like this. I wanted to revisit it one more time, just, just to be sure. But, yeah. Maybe we'll take your advice, Councilman.
Well, and it, it's interesting. I actually did a presentation at Mako. Mako actually asked me to go up, and there was three of us, three of us procurement professionals that were asked to speak. We were given pretty much, what do you want to speak about? I chose local preference. After I did the presentation, there was actually a business owner, it wasn't Wycomico County, but I forget which county he was from, and he actually came up to me and he said, you know, I'm glad that, that you're out there and you're, and you're, you're saying these things, because as a local business owner to, to his county, he would be against any, any preference for the reasons that I've spoke.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Rice, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. At this time, entertain a motion to adjourn from the open work session, so we can go into closed session.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting's adjourned. We'll take a five-minute recess while we're getting, getting organized.